I don't think she can hear us.
I can hear you.
Oh, very good.
I muted it because my clock is chiming on the hour.
We're calling to order at 4:05, the Board of Trustees Library Meeting. First of all, could we introduce the, oh, first let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, please, and I'll lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which stands our nation, our individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll do an introduction of the board members. Tracy, would you like to start?
Tracy Robinson, District Four.
Terry Thomas, District Two. Bernie Cole, District Three.
Joe Bogus, District Eleven.
Lynn Miller, District Ten, and Chair.
Janet Porter, Vice Chair, District Eight.
Rosalie Richmond, District Seven.
Brenda Latson-Powell, District One.
And we have some county staff, and who is that?
We do. My name is Amanda Dickman. I am the Library Director. And we have Alec Bishop and Craig, who are with Broadcast Services. And we have a number of guests today. Did you want to introduce those?
I do. We have Janice Herbert. She's Vice President of the Friends of Beaufort Library. Tally Essman is the Membership Chair of Friends of the Beaufort Library. Welcome, both of you. In the last row, we have Melinda Henrickson, who is Chair of Families Against Book Bans. Mary Foster, Program Director for Families Against Book Bans. And Don Pemberton, who is a Membership Chair in that same organization. Welcome, for all of you. I'm so glad to see that you're here today. We have no public comment? Any public comment? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes that were sent out?
Still moved.
Thank you. And second, all in favor? Is there any correspondence? No?
All right, we now have the Library Directors' Report.
Well, good afternoon. Let me get my bearings straight. I want to begin by showing you a few pictures of things that have happened since your last meeting, so that would be the end of May, June, and now the first part of July. In the left-hand corner, you see boxes in the Port Royal Library, the Samuel Emory Branch. Those are, half of those are done and on the shelf, and we're still plowing through the other half. For any of you who have library experience, you know we're going to be in the thick of it because we're now to the picture books. And you can pack a lot of picture books in those boxes, so it's on track. And our team, I can't say enough about our team who's processing those and getting those ready for the shelf. And you also see some smiles for summer. And this was at Lubbock in the bottom right-hand corner for Bubble Day on kickoff of summer reading. They were doing all things bubbles. In the middle, this is a Hilton Head reader. She was decorating her tote bag to kickoff summer and to have a fancy personalized tote bag to take all her books home. Up in the upper, in the middle, you see my arm and some friendly faces. Tracy was there for the opening of the Story Walk, our third Story Walk, the second one funded and supported by the Friends of Beaufort Library. This one's at the Naval Heritage Skate Park in Port Royal, a great precursor to having that library open soon there as well. We had a great crowd on a hot morning, and that Story Walk is now open, and I encourage everyone to go look at its story. In the bottom, we hosted, at the Bluffton Library, we hosted author Angela May. She released her third installment of the Islander series. She co-authors that with an author you probably know, Mrs. Mary Alice Monroe. But we had Angela for a book signing, and she encouraged all the readers at Bluffton to get started with adventures. And on the other end, you see one of our youngest readers enjoying a snow cone on a hot day as a reward for starting summer reading. As customary, I'm going to go over the four points of our strategic plan and show you some updates and highlights of things we've accomplished in the past two months. So I want to start with our strategy of communication. One of our listed strategies is to inform and educate cardholders through print and digital media and communications. Early this year, we started, we opened an Instagram account and also hired a social media assistant who just does all things social media. Since his coming on to our staff and since launching Instagram, our Facebook followers have grown, 431 new followers in the past since February. And we went from zero Instagram people to 216, and those numbers continue to grow as we put content in front of Beaufort County and beyond to showcase the great things done by Beaufort County Library. So I'll say again, if you're not following us on either of those platforms or both of them, like and follow and share to all of your followers. The second strategy that we focus on are collections. So the items on the shelf and the items on our website are the things that people borrow. One of those is that we want to make sure we're offering a wide range of collections in contemporary formats. And so you're going to hear in a minute from Joe, our Finance Chair, but we've had a record year for purchasing materials, things that are going to check out and be read or enjoyed by library cardholders. And he's going to talk more about the breakdown of those numbers, but almost a million dollars spent is a big, big thing for Beaufort County. And I thank everyone for your support in this room, and then also all of our cardholders who might be watching who are borrowing those items and letting us know what they like and how we can continue to provide the resources they're looking for. Our third strategic focus is user experience. And we're always looking for ways to reinvigorate library events, programs that would reflect community interest. And we are wrapping up our Summer Artist in Residence Program. We've been hosting Pete Tram, you see him with the statue. He's been doing photography workshops at our Bluffton and St. Helena libraries. And I would like to take this opportunity to invite you to the exhibit of all the photographs that have been taken by the students attending his workshops. It will be on Saturday, July 20th, at the Bluffton Library, where you can see on display the photos that people have made just by attending his classes. Also, the fourth and final focus that we work on in terms of our strategic plan is space. So we have been working diligently for this past year in getting Port Royal ready to open to the public. I continue to make progress on getting those lockers ready for Burton Wells, and we also installed that third Story Walk. Let me show you some pictures from Port Royal. So this is where we were in May. This is where we are in July. You can still see the, it's just different perspective, but we're populating some of those shelves now, today have some books on them, so I just didn't have an opportunity to get you an updated shelf view. This is the bigger picture that you saw before. This is what it will look like once the books are back, but right now it's a staging area for all the books that we just received. And then in the front, you can see we've, the grass is greener, the sign is in place, and they're getting things ready with added, adding mulch and some other upfitting things to make that landscape pop. And then our new Story Walk, as I mentioned, is at the Naval Heritage Skate Park. It was opened on Saturday, January 29th. Our Friends of the Beaufort Library had a good showing and a great time, and I wanted to just make sure everybody has a formal invitation to go see this new venture. And with that, I want to introduce Janice Herbert, who's the Vice Chair of the Friends of Beaufort Library. I asked that she come and talk to you today just about what the Friends of the Library do, how they support the northern branches, and really just as an introduction so that you get a chance to put a face to our Friends.
Good afternoon. Carter Hoyt, our President, is out of town this week, and so Amanda asked me to come and talk to you for just a couple of minutes to describe, let you know what we've been doing for the libraries in the past year. So our mission, the Friends of the Beaufort Library's mission, is to support the Beaufort County Library System for the libraries north of the Broad River, including Lubbock, this downtown library, and St. Helena, and very soon at Port Royal. In the past year, we provided $44,800 to the libraries, those libraries, for the programs. And I would like to mention briefly what some of those programs include. We provide financial support for the library's annual summer reading programs. We provide materials for various library programs and for library staff member training sessions throughout the year. We support and volunteer at the library's Author Talk programs. Currently, our members are volunteering assisting with the Beaufort County Summer Lunches Program. We have members going every day, Monday through Friday, to help hand out lunches to children. And that goes, that started June 10th and goes through July 31st. In anticipation of the opening of the Port Royal Library, we made it possible for every student at the Port Royal Elementary School to purchase and take home one book from their book sale, so they can start reading and then realize that they love to read. We were awarded a grant from the Coastal Community Foundation and to assist in helping with the Port Royal Branch. And with Amanda's suggestions, we are going to install a bench and a bike rack at the library. Amanda talked about Story Walk. We funded two Story Walk installations, one at the Spanish Moss Trail. We think it was the coldest day in January, and then up until this week, June 29th, was the hottest day. That was our second one, and that's at the Naval Heritage Park, right next to the skate park. And I don't remember the name of the book, but the book, the first book is about a young girl who is a skater at a skate park. And just to let y'all, we also host, plan, and sponsor the annual Book Sandwiched End Series at USCB Auditorium from January through March, where local leaders come and present a thought-provoking book. And we, it's free to the public. Also, I wanted to mention, those are the programs that we have provided in the last year. I want to mention that we had our annual meeting on June 22nd, and we elected new officers to the board. First of all, our President, Carter Hoyt, was elected to continue on for one more year. We have a new Treasurer, Alexandra Hendrickson. A new systems admin to coordinate all system technology, vendors, passwords, programs, all of that, and that's Amy Page. And we have a new Secretary, Karen Neumeister. But also, we want to thank you for all that you do to support the libraries and ensure that the libraries are an important part of our community. We thank you for advocating for our libraries in the community and the legislature. We also want to thank you for the Newport Royal Library. Tally Essman, our Membership Chairman, is here, and she let us know that we've had several new memberships from residents of Port Royal. And so we think that's part of the excitement of them getting their own library. And of course, we appreciate you for employing Amanda Dickman as a Director of the Beaufort County Library System. Amanda is an instrumental part of working with us and supporting and having a successful partnership with the libraries. Do I have any questions or comments?
Janice, first, would you stand by the microphone so people can hear you?
I'm sorry.
I want to make sure. First of all, that's excellent. We're very happy that you're volunteering and doing so much, and please extend our, the whole full Board's appreciation to your membership of the fact that we really appreciate what the Friends do. For the people watching, and I know people love to watch this channel, we're surprised with the view who sometimes say, "I see you on TV." Would you explain to people how they could join the Friends if they're interested, so anybody who's watching who, and what you just reported intrigues them, could easily become a member?
Thank you for asking. It's easy to join the Friends of the Library online. You can go to the Friends of the Beaufort, Friendsofthebeaufortlibrary.com, and on the top bar is donate/join, and that's a way to join. Could also pick up envelopes in the libraries and mail in a check. We have different levels, starting at, well, $25, but also it's for $15 for active military and on up. And then you become a friend. Yes. And with that, you get to have early access at our annual book sale, which is the first weekend in November.
And there isn't an examination or an intensive interview, or you have to be able to leap tall buildings to the single bound or anything like that?
Thank you. No. No, there is, there are no restrictions. We invite anyone to join. We also receive, occasionally, we received tribute donations, and I've, we received one from Michigan last month for someone who lived locally. So we are happy to have any, everyone join.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'd just like to comment for the record that you all are doing a great job of spreading the word of reading and also, you know, helping the library system participate in a lot of projects. I was President of the local library, Friends of the Library, about 10 years ago, and I came from there onto the Board of the actual library, which is what I have now. But you all are doing a great job in your help with that annual book sale. That makes a lot of difference.
Thank you, yes. Thank you very much. Anything else? Well, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Janice. Thanks for all you're doing.
This is the end of my report, but I will clarify for the record, I did not ask her to say glowing remarks about the Library Director.
All right. The next report.
Amanda, are you going to answer the question as to when we think the Port Royal Library will be open?
I'm hesitant to give a date, but we are in talks with the County Public Information Officer about some dates, so that should be very soon. If you read our email newsletter that went to all cardholders, it said, "We really, really, really are going to announce this soon." But I have my heart set on a date, but there are a couple of loose ends I need to make sure tie up. We want, I know that there will be people who circle that date and highlight it and move other events to be there, and I'd hate to give them a date and then switch it. Yes.
Okay, we're going to next have the
Special Funds.
Financial Report. Joe, would you like to do the financial?
Yeah. Thank you. I'm Finance Chair, we'll be, this actually ends our fiscal year, so we'll be going through our numbers here, but at the same time, going to give something of a retrospective to identify how we spent the money, where the money's gone, and some of the implications from there. What we'll do is to start with our normal package distribution, which is with the Special Funds page, and our audience can kind of follow everything that's on the screen there. And we're going to start up in the upper left-hand corner with our state aid lottery box, and you'll see that we've received $421,000 for the year in terms of state aid. We've spent $417, leaving about $3,600 in terms of a carryover. I was also told just before the meeting that we've snuck in a last-minute invoice, so that will probably end up zeroing out, very close to zero, by the end of the year. This is, this is really a good spending there. Now, jumping over one column there into impact fees, and to really take a look at this, you have to take the 4.3 million that's at the bottom of that column, and the $400,000 that's at the bottom of the left-hand column to look at our total balance, which really is about $4.7 million. We took in receipts since our last meeting here, a little over $71,000. We had a single expenditure in this reporting period here of about $55,000, and that is out of the Beaufort-Port Royal Division section, and that was really for the Port Royal branch itself, new branch itself. So that covers some construction costs. It covers some irrigation landscaping, which made the grass greener in the second slide, more current slide than Amanda put up over there. So that's really the tax dollars, the impact fees that work. We're making the grass very green there in terms of irrigation and also landscaping for that. For the year, we spent about $2 million out of, out of impact fees for the land purchase on May River. We've spent about $505,000 for the Port Royal branch in total here. So for the year, we spent about $2.5 million of our impact fees, and we're still left with a very, very, very healthy balance going forward. Now, part of that number here, that 4.7 million, is really, to use Beaufort County accounting terms, encumbered. In other words, there are identified expenditures that are in the offing in the future, waiting for that. What we, what we include in that number is really May River Library design fees, about half a million dollars just for that here. We have the Bluffton Phase II Project, $45,000, and Hilton Head Architecture Engineering Study, another $50,000. Putting those together, it's just under $600,000. There's also some still to be accounted for expenditures for Port Royal of another about $200,000. So of that 4.7, we have about $800,000 in terms of encumbered or identified going forward expenditures here, still leaving us with about $3.9 million for future activities for the, for the library in total. And some of that future activity would be continued expenditures for the May River and other developments as both Bluffton and Hilton Head projects move on forward there. And then moving one column over there, these are the special trusts that we have here, and from the last accounting period, reporting period, we took in about $2,200,000, almost $2,300,000, $2,300 in endowment interest. We had a $61 donation to the Beaufort District Collection, another $30,000, $30 donation to the Beaufort County Library itself, leaving us with a special trust fund, about $233,000. So we can move over one slide there, and we're going to talk about our budget, which is also in your package here. And again, what we are looking for, looking at is the actual spend for this fiscal year. And actually, Amanda spent a little bit more than was in the budget, but all of that somewhat washes itself out here. Looking at Personnel Services, just for a second here, we had a budget of $4.1 million. We spent $4.2 million, so we're overspent on the personnel line, about $124,000. I was actually told that this is more of an idiosyncrasy of Beaufort County accounting, the way money flows into the Beaufort County, Beaufort Personnel Accounts. And in some cases, in this particular instance here, the expenditure preceded the money being put in on the budget side. So from a Beaufort County point of view, this all washed itself out. So none of it has to be accounted for by Amanda herself there. On the operating side, all of the, of the supplies and expenses that we have here were actually underspent, about $70,000. So actually, the total, you could say So actually, the total, you could say numerical, mathematical, overspending, a little over $50,000 here. So for the year, we spent four, almost, almost $4.9 million there. So if we could move over now to materials, which is really my favorite report, one that I'd like to talk about here. As Amanda pointed out earlier, we had a record year, 925,000 spent on library materials. And the way I look at this, this is really the number, you know, the materials, the books on the shelves here is what really brings people into the doors. And when we take a look at what's happening in terms of circulation numbers, which are really hitting large numbers like 57,000, what we're looking at in terms of materials is really the driver, the force behind all these people coming in to the doors, to the libraries, picking up the books, picking up the materials. So this is really sort of the crux of everything. This is our deliverable, if you could say, to Buford County. So for the year, for the fiscal year, we spent 925,000. As Amanda identified earlier, for the most part, this, this money really came from the county. It was a major contributor to our funding, about 427,000, you know, followed by state aid, and about 415. What is noteworthy is when we look at how this money was spent, and for this fiscal year, HOOPLA, which is really the digital side of the materials, materials activity, represented the majority of the spend. 52% of all of our dollars spent went to HOOPLA, and then everything else went out here onto the material side. Between last year and this year, in last year, we spent about $760,000 on materials. The division was pretty much the same, there's just a couple points shifting between print and who, print and digital. But interestingly, the division, the spread of materials was really quite a bit the same here. Let me dwell a little bit on it, 925,000, because I think it's important to put this into perspective. It's that last year, we spent 760,000. Five years ago, we spent 577,000. And I went back in some of my notes, as I've been finance chair for a while, in 2013, we spent 217,000. So over the time, there's been really a progression in terms of how much we're able to bring to the table for Buford County in terms of materials. And this is really sort of, that's my personal deliverable when we take a look at what's happening with the library itself. And also, it's important to realize that of that 925, over 100,000 of that was really to fill the shelves at Port Royal itself. So a more normalized spend number would bring us to around the 800,000 range. So when we take a look at last year, 760, more normalized, no, 800 range, I think that we're progressing nicely. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit as we get to the next slide here, which is really what we're looking at in terms of our budget for fiscal year 2025. Okay. Well, I hope your vision is good, you read those numbers over there. So what we have here, and I'd like to take, for those that are, that are following here, I think it's good to take a look at the last column, which is really, it's called FY25 Actu, but it's, that's actually the budget, FY25 budget, this nomenclature that Buford County uses. So this fiscal year, we spent roughly five, 4.9 million. Next fiscal year, we're going to spend 5.9 million, roughly. The difference between the two years is really put more into the personnel side of it. That accounts for really the lion's share of the increase in spending that we have here, and that's additional staff on Amanda's, Amanda's side and headquarters staff, and also staffing for the Port Royal branch itself. So that accounts for really the growth that we have here, plus normal salary growth and benefits and such that Buford County has to afford. On the rest of it, when we look at the supply expenses side, very much the same. One point that I want to bring your attention to is on materials, which is really 400, 450,000. So our budget for fiscal year '25, materials, 450,000. To that, we will get another roughly 450,000 in terms of state aid. Next year's budget number is actually 467,000, but let's use 450 just for round numbers. So 450 from the county, 450 from state aid, 900,000. In last year, last fiscal year, we got about 79,000 from Friends of the Library. So let's add another, conservatively, 70,000 from Friends of the Library to 900,000, so we're at 970,000 for next year in terms of materials. Again, and those are really the factors that we're looking at here. So actually, her personal objective for next year is to exceed $1 million in terms of materials there. So when we take a look at all of this in perspective, I think we had a very healthy spending year. Our capital side of it, the money that we have for future projects, it's very good, and I'm very happy looking at our next year's budget numbers here. So that concludes my side of the report, and if there are any questions, we'll be, we'll do the best that we can.
Do we know what the population of Buford County is?
We're bringing estimates, estimates around 200,000, give or take.
So that means we spend about $5 per citizen-
Yeah, yeah.
-on books and materials, which is, you know, that a million dollars seems like a lot, but when you say it's $5 per person, that's a modest investment in people-
Yeah.
-reading and having access to newspapers and magazines, movies and-
And good value for the county.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Very thorough report, for sure. Thank you so much. We're now going to do other committees, and Tracy, you, Tracy, you are in charge of the policy and procedures, and I believe you had some meetings. Would you like to just talk about the first meeting, the first policy that you changed?
Yeah, the first policy is the code of conduct policies. And I'd like to make a motion to accept the code of conduct policy as distributed to all the board members. You have that in your packet.
Don't move.
Okay, and I, so Tracy gave the motion and, and, sorry, Bernie seconded.
How soon we forget?
Too much going on. Bernie seconded, thank you.
There you go, right there.
Yeah, I'm looking at the name. Okay, are there, now what the, I can just explain this pretty easily. Legal asked us to change this, correct?
Yeah, so what we're doing with the code of conduct is that many people have seen this on our website, on our doors, where we'll be removing in the bottom section of prohibited activities, the phrase, "Using photographic, video, or other recording devices without library staff approval." It was brought to our attention that it is a First Amendment right to be able to photograph and take video in a public space, and that, that is upheld in the state of South Carolina as a one consent state. And so legally, it means that people can take photos and videos without requesting permission, so we need to make our code of conduct match what, what law provides.
Is there any other discussion?
And just like to point out one of the sentences that really needs to stick out, "All library users, regardless of age, are subject to the library code of conduct." Simple.
Thank you so much. Okay, so all in favor of the code of, of the change to the code of conduct policy? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? All right, Tracy, what is the next one?
Okay, our next policy is photo release policy. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the photo release policy as distributed to the board.
Don't move.
Want to talk a little bit about that first, or we're good? Go ahead.
No, okay, thank you, and Bernie seconded. Would you, so what, we were asked to take out library, patrons and visitors to the library may not take photographs or videos of other patrons or staff without permission of persons being photographed. Apparently, we, apparently, we can't do that. We, people can take photographs in the library, it's a public space, correct? Do we have any, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have passed the photo release policy.
Okay.
And the next one?
And our last one that we made changes toward was the donation and gift policies. And I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation and gift policies, and that too is in your packet.
Don't move. That's my only function here.
No, that's not your only function.
I take my hand, I go.
Thank you, Bernie.
Yeah, it was a few things that we needed to change as far as accepting gifts and donations, and we just wanted to make it clear with everybody.
So we wanted to address the naming of libraries and library spaces-
Yes.
...which we did not have any policy for, but we do now. Is there any discussion for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that one is, that, thank you, Tracy, thanks for that work on that.
You're welcome.
So that's the policies and procedures. Next, we have strategic planning. Is there any, any, no report? Request for, Joe, request for reconsider, for reconsideration? Is there any report?
We have nothing to reconsider.
Library facilities committee, Bernie, do you have anything to add to?
No, I think Amanda covered it properly and fully. It's just a slow project in Port Royal, which is, can I say, government speed?
Actually, I think they're doing pretty fast.
Okay, I guess by standards, yes.
Yeah, but we all know, there's so much involved. They want to make it right. Next, we have the Friends of the Library. Who, who, is there a report from the Buford Library Friends?
Janice and Amanda have already covered very eloquently everything that we need to.
Thank you. How about the Bluffton Library? Rosalie, did you get a chance to go there?
Yeah, I was there for part of the meeting, and I can only say that they are very busily working to bring on more funding and to get new members. And that's basically it.
Okay, thank you. I attended the Friends of the Hilton Head Library, and we have a new president, and it's Barb Foley. And Barb Foley just retired last weekend, and she's never been, she's attended some of the meetings of the Friends, but she's jumping right in and going to be president of the Friends. She thinks that she needs something to do, and this will just be perfect, so we are so happy to have her. So she will be running that. The Public Library Foundation, I attended that meeting this morning by Zoom, thank goodness, and they are, they met to discuss different ways to support the library this summer and next year. And they're, they, I think, have agreed to be sponsors for summer reading next year, right? Which would be very nice. Is there any old business? Any new business? No. Okay, so we, we will now go into executive session. Wait a minute.
Ben? I would be curious about the people who are here who have not had a chance to speak, who are, if they would just tell us a little bit about their organization, would that be okay?
Sure. Would you like to talk about it?
Come up to the podium, because, again-
I'm not feeling like impromptu speaking.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I should have given you a warning. But tell us a little bit about your organization.
Sure, right here, can y'all hear me okay? Families Against Book Bans started in January of 2023, and happening in the Buford County schools. We're a group of parents and students and community members who are concerned about the efforts to limit access to reading material. So that small group of about 12 people in the first couple of days has grown to over 500 in a private Facebook group. We are involved locally and at the state level with championing First Amendment rights and the right to read. And we mostly wanted to be here today to offer our support. We are aware of the budget proviso that impacts county public libraries, and we just present and make sure that there's nothing we needed to know about or that we needed to assist with to continue to make sure that, and I can answer questions, that was a really quick summary of what we do.
First of all, I'm very impressed that you've grown from 12 to 500 in a year and a half. I mean, that's amazing. And, you know, we stand for the right for people to have a variety of materials to educate and grow, so we applaud your efforts to try to make sure that we make all kind of library materials available to the citizens we serve. So thank you very much for everything you do, we appreciate it.
What are you, how are you, what are you, what are you actually doing to, are you-
As some of you may know, the process in Buford County was completed, and 91 of the books were sold. One of the books that was challenged was never in any of our schools, so the others were returned, or 91 of the others. Since then, there has been state legislation to impact the ability for people to challenge books and potentially, so we were at the State House and at State Board of Education meetings, balance the need for parents to certainly have control over what their children So we've been involved in that way. And then our members, actually, we have a banned book club that meets once a month. Also give away lots of books, that's personally my favorite thing we do. I'm a teacher by training professionally, and so we just had a booth at the Gola Festival, we gave away about 250 books in less than two hours, brand new books that we get donated and give away. So we're currently collecting, attend a festival in Bluffton, we were invited to be a part of the Heritage Festival at Penn Center, and Lived by Festival in Port Royal in November. So we try to champion the freedom to read and also put more, I think, books unfortunately taken from them.
Yes, no, thank you. Of course. Any other questions?
Thanks for what you do, Mary, and I'm not being biased. I've known her for years. I've known her for years.
Tracy, you've known everyone for years.
You guys know everyone, that's true. But thank you all so much, we're happy to be here today.
Thank you for coming. [applause]
I want to say that I was in the Bluffton Library this summer, and I saw many parents, mainly mothers, there with children. And I asked them about the library, and they said they are so delighted with the library. The kids love the new section that's for the children, and they, they just were very happy with the library.
I know that our, our, our memberships, our, our cardholders have increased, as is the number of people that actually attend the libraries, up, I think, 30%, I think I read, it's, that's a lot. So good job, Amanda, and let's just keep going forward and just keep selling our books. So, thank you. So we are now going to go into an executive session. That is meant to discuss employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, and release of an employee pursuant to Code 30-4-70A2. Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for coming. All right.
We are out of executive session and we were, we, can I have, may I have a motion to accept the performance review for Amanda Dickman?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
A second.
Second. All right. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So thank you very much for your participation in that. There's one announcement. Our next meeting is scheduled for September the 11th at 4:00 p.m. at the Hilton Head Branch Library. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All right. Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Carrie.